Well, are you a business owner in Los Angeles? If you are, you may have an opportunity to land a contract with one of the largest entities in the city. Rasha Goel explains.
Twelve hundred local business owners recently took advantage of networking and learning about possible opportunities they will have to participate in contracts for construction of the LAX Land Site Access Modernization Program, known as LAMP.
It is a five and a half billion dollar program that will build the train to LAX, and this will be a two and a quarter mile automated people mover. It will have three on-airport stations and will extend essentially off-airport to be anchored by a new consolidated rent-a-car facility, as well as a connection to the region's metro system. So it's incredibly exciting.
LAWA recently held the LAMP Business Opportunities Forum to provide local businesses with an opportunity to find out about upcoming projects, as well as network with contractors that are planning to participate in the selection process.
I'm really excited that LAX is playing a huge, significant role in really forcing the primes and small businesses to connect.
We're going to create more than 121,000 annual jobs and generate over $7.6 billion in labor income and more than $20 billion in business revenue.
LAWA was the initiator of the city's new Local and Local Small Business Enterprise Program ordinance, which went into effect in November 2016. This ordinance ensures that local businesses have the opportunity to participate in large projects.
Many different industries will have an opportunity to participate in the program. So we're focused on making sure that we communicate as much as we can about the project and the program.
The overall LAMP project is designed to relieve traffic congestion with the central terminal area and on surrounding streets, as well as improve the travel experience. It is expected to be completed by 2023. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Eighty million passengers are expected to travel through LAX this year. Well, here's a chance to bone up on your sonnets and couplets. A Shakespeare exhibit just took to the stage at the L.A. Public Library, and Anna Marcos has more.
So what do the timeless Shakespeare and former U.S. President Abe Lincoln have in common? Turns out, plenty. It's just one of many fascinating historical tidbits that you'll find at the L.A. Public Library's Shakespeare Exhibit.
Of course, the infamous John Wilkes Booth, assassin of President Lincoln, was a Shakespearean actor who Lincoln would have seen perform.
The Shakespeare exhibit, called America's Shakespeare: The Bard Goes West, helps mark the 400th anniversary of Shakespeare's death. It's a joint effort by the L.A. Public Library and Library Foundation and the Folgers Shakespeare Library, the largest collection of Shakespeare memorabilia in the world. And apparently, some of the exhibits even have a little Southern California flavor.
One thing that we were really interested to learn is that Hermosa Beach was first called Shakespeare Beach. When the red car trains opened there in 1906, the developers thought it would be a writer's colony, so they named all the streets after writers.
Students, scholars, history and costume buffs, writers, actors, and just plain old bard-loving folks will all find something to like, as they revel in both Shakespearean masterpieces and Shakespearean trivia, and maybe brush up on their iambic pentameter. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Well, you can see the Shakespeare exhibit at the L.A. Public Library until February 26th. For more information, visit shakespeare.lfla.org. While visitors to L.A.'s iconic Hollyhock House may feel a bit cozier upon entering, just as the original owner did nearly a century ago. An exact copy of her favorite sculpture is now displayed for all to see. Gil Reyes has more from Hollyhock House. Gil?
Yes, Yana, very exciting. A replica of the original piece of artwork that once graced here at L.A.'s legendary Hollyhock House is now in a part of the house where original owner Aileen Barnes-Dahl would have wanted it to be.
The sculpture, A Roman Marble Relief, now sits in the house's entrance, in the loggia. It's exactly where the former owner placed the original work back in the early 1920s.
And what it does ultimately is it gives the visitor a sense of a place that is inhabited instead of just a formal museum.
Hollyhock curator Jeffrey Herr, referring to the work entitled Three Dancing Nymphs. It's an exact replica of the original, a sculpture that former homeowner Aileen Barnes-Dahl once called, quote, "The thing I most love, except for my relatives." The artwork was said to instantly relax the oil heiress upon entering.
It left when she did in 1927. It's had some, an interesting history, and right now, the original can be seen at the Getty Museum in Brentwood. But we have, through technology, been able to reproduce it using 3D scanning and 3D printing.
The Hollyhock House, built by famed architect Frank Lloyd Wright, reopened in 2015 after years of renovation. City officials say plans to restore the motor court and other parts of the property are planned.
We're bringing back Hollyhock House, one piece at a time, back to its original incarnation.
In East Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Hollyhock House is open for public tours Thursdays through Sundays. Well, turning now to a huge birthday bash, as the L.A. Zoo celebrated 50 candles on its birthday cake over the holidays. The festivities included animal parades, cake, and some strange creatures. Anna Marcos takes us there.
Lots of people in pointy hats flooded the gates at the L.A. Zoo. The event, called Zoo Libration, marked the zoo's 50th birthday. All sorts of beasts, both real and fantastical, marked the event in style: twirling, strutting, prancing, or just looking for some birthday goodies to munch on. And take a look at this birthday cake, or this one, at least what's left of it. It seems everyone got goodies, both the two-legged mammals and the four-legged kind.
The black bear was eating the buds off its cake.
It was made out of paper mache, but they put like what they eat on it. For the black bear, they put mule worms, grapes, and seeds. And for the bear, they put vegetables.
We will be having some special feedings for our tigers, our gorillas.
Special feedings, an animal parade, a children's petting zoo, it was easy to forget the zoo also has a very serious mission: to teach future generations about animal conservation. Zookeepers have helped bring back and raise endangered or threatened species, like the prong-horned antelope and the California condor.
Technologies that we develop here, simply caring for the animals that live here, are now being used more and more by field biologists and researchers to save animals in the field.
They do good education, they talk about conservation and the condor program, so it's a great way for the kids to learn what they need to carry on.
In spite of the serious business of running a zoo, the party isn't over. In fact, it will be a year long. The L.A. Zoo will hold 50th Anniversary Zoo Libration events all year. But for this bear at least, it looks like the party is over, except for the paper mache. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information on Zoo Libration events and the zoo's 50th anniversary, visit zoolibrates50.org. And even more celebrations just down the street, as Griffith Park marked its own anniversary. Rasha Goel was there as the park turned 120 years old.
Griffith Park recently celebrated its 120th anniversary. Among the attendees was former Councilman Tom Labonge, who has had his own personal memories at the park.
All eight Labonge boys grew up within walking distance and hiking distance at Griffith Park. I learned to swim in the Griffith Park pool. I remember the area before the freeway was built in the 50s. I can't tell you all the stories, all the dates I used to take here to Griffith Park.
The celebration included rides on the historic merry-go-round, live jazz music, and a rock climbing wall, amongst other activities.
But I think it's very much more important that we preserve, to the best of our ability, our jewels like Griffith Park.
Griffith Park is named after Colonel Griffith J. Griffith, who deeded the original land to the city of Los Angeles for use as a public park. Griffith Park is one of the largest urban parks in North America and spreads over 4,000 acres. It's definitely a popular location. In fact, in 2011, it was one of the busiest destinations for on-location filming. According to Film L.A., the park was booked for 346 production days. Griffith Park is also a popular family spot. After all, you can explore the trains at Travel Town Museum, or explore the heavens from Griffith Observatory.
I love Griffith Park. I come here when I can.
We have this great giant piece of public land for everyone to come and spend their time in. We got golf courses, we got a carousel, we got the zoo, there's all kinds of stuff. It's great.
Griffith Park's 120th birthday holds a special place in the hearts of millions, including mine. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
By the way, Griffith Park's merry-go-round inspired Walt Disney to create Disneyland. Well, a new recycling program puts the city on the road to cleaner air for us all. A major thoroughfare in Pacoima becomes a great street, and another community garden is about to take root. All these stories in City B. The city of Los Angeles recently adopted an ambitious new program to expand recycling services to every business and resident within the city. With the goal of reducing waste going to landfills by 1 million tons annually by the year 2025, officials say Zero Waste L.A. will dramatically reduce greenhouse gas and air pollution emissions by expanding recycling services and opportunities, mandating clean fuel, low-emission vehicles, and more efficient truck routing. Immediate direct benefits to customers will include a reduction in traffic congestion, consistent and equitable rates, and improved customer service. The three and a half billion, 10-year Zero Waste L.A. program is set to launch this summer and will invest more than $200 million in new and improved solid waste infrastructure. Community members and business leaders gathered to celebrate completion of a Great Streets project for Van Nuys Boulevard in the heart of Pacoima. These improvements mark the latest milestone in the Great Streets initiative and include high-visibility pedestrian crossings, buffered and protected bike lanes, and street resurfacing. In 2014, the Pacoima stretch of Van Nuys Boulevard running from Laurel Canyon to San Fernando Road was selected as one of the first 15 Great Street corridors. Since then, Van Nuys Boulevard has seen the launch of an entrepreneur center, an outdoor art museum, and 11,000 square feet of reconstructed sidewalk. All of these improvements are aimed at enhancing Van Nuys Boulevard as an economic, cultural, and transportation hub.
Culture is one of the most amazing gifts that we have in the city of Los Angeles, and it is represented in every one of our communities, and our job is to foster that creativity everywhere.
In an effort to promote sustainable communities through urban gardening, Council District 13 announced a partnership with the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Los Angeles Community Garden Council, and the local community to fund a Madison Avenue community garden. The Los Angeles Community Garden plans to build the community garden on the back half of the property located at 1175 Madison Avenue, and construct a 640-square-foot educational building on site. Council district officials say gardens make communities healthier and provide a place to de-stress from everyday life. The $600,000 project should be completed by the end of the year. An art exhibit highlights the power of photography. A popular food market offers mouth-watering culinary delights, and some of the best drummers beat it out during a drum-off contest. All this and this week's things to do. The International Photographic Art Exposition, also known as Photo L.A., announces its 26th edition. Photo L.A. carries on its mandate to exhibit both traditional and contemporary art galleries and private dealers from around the globe. Photo L.A. continues the discourse on photography's place in the world of fine art, providing a distinctive platform for the display of everything, from vintage masterworks from the 19th and 20th centuries to contemporary photography, new techniques and new forms of presentation, as well as video and multimedia installations. By hosting more than 80 prestigious exhibitors and over 10,000 visitors comprised of collectors, curators, dealers, and lovers of fine art, Photo L.A. has developed a distinguished reputation, ranking it among the top photography fairs in the world. The fair takes place January 13 through the 15th at the L.A. Mart. For more, visit photo.la.com. Smorgasburg launched in May of 2011 as a spinoff of Brooklyn Flea, a popular Brooklyn flea market. It returns with a plate of new flavors for the discerning L.A. crowd. Fine dozens of exciting food vendors each Sunday at Smorgasburg, plus sophisticated shopping, craft, style, vintage, wellness, and more. Cultural events, pop-ups, and other surprise experiences will also be part of the market mix, transforming the vast site into a unique destination for the region. Take a bite of L.A. on Sunday, January 15th, at Alameda Produce Market in downtown L.A. For more, visit la smorgasburg.com. The search for the top undiscovered drummer heats up during the Guitar Center's Drum-Off Finals. After making it through the preliminary rounds, the top five undiscovered drummers will hit the stage at the Novo at L.A. Live to compete for the Drum-Off title. The Drum-Off competition was developed to inspire and support drummers in the pursuit of their musical aspirations. Drum-Off is committed to rewarding and recognizing talent by providing a launching pad for a professional career as a drummer. The finale takes place on Saturday, January 14th, at the Novo at L.A. Live. For more, visit drumoff.guitarcenter.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane. From all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
This is Koreatown. My name is Huang Be Kim. You watch L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
We are live streaming on the internet, as well as on Channel 35. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonin, Buscagino, Sidio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 10 members present and accord, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And if we can go to the first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Sidio moves. Councilmember Bloomingfield seconds. Next item, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilwoman Martinez moves. Councilmember O'Farrell seconds. Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue 1 C-H-K-P to January 27, 2017, as well as receive and file 1 R in a as well as receive and file one R in as much as the lien was paid in full, reduce the lien to one Q to $1,752.41 due to partial payment, and finally, there is a request to continue item number two to February 17, 2017.
All right, colleagues, those are approved without objection, next items, please.
Mr. President, items one and two are items known as for public, there are cards on item number one.
All right, we'll go ahead and hold those on the desk.
Next are items three and four, and those are items which public hearings have not been held, committee reports for items three and four have been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, and do we have any specials on those, colleagues? Seeing none, do we have cards?
Public hearing has been held for those.
Those are the ones for held, okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on those items, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved, thank you so much, next items, please.
Item number five is an item for which public hearing has not been held, ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration on item number five, close the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, so that item is now before us, so we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is approved, next items, please.
The next item, council has presentations or council has option to start the special meeting.
We'll go ahead and start the special, and then on seven, we have a substitute motion, and I don't, has it been circulated? Not yet, so we'll go ahead and hold that on the desk, actually, we won't go into seven, it has not been circulated, next item, please.
Mr. President, excuse me, I was wrong, we need one more minute for the special meeting to start, so...
Oh, no problem, we'll go ahead and go back to the special later since it hasn't been circulated yet, anyway, okay, so next items, please.
Council has presentations or items held special for cards, sir.
Okay, let's go ahead and we'll go into presentations at this moment. Okay, let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Price for a special presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President, members, in the spirit and in the celebration of this MLK Weekend, Martin Luther King Weekend, I'd like to honor a man who's added to the cultural fabric of Los Angeles with his historic murals, please help me in welcoming Alonzo Davis. Alonzo was born on the campus of the historic Tuskegee Institute in Alabama, his first exposure to the arts were paintings of George Washington Carver, an artist as well as a scientist, and the music of composer, conductor, Bill Dawson, both men with indelible presences at Tuskegee. His family, traveling by train, moved to Los Angeles in 1956, Davis graduated from Dorsey High, attended LA City College, Pepperdine, USC, and earned a master's of fine arts degree from the Otis School of Art and Design. He co-owned, with his brother Dale Davis, the Brockman Gallery in La Mert Park from 1967 to 1990, also with fellow artists, John Otto Bridge and Greg Bryant, he founded the Watch Towers Jazz Festival. Davis worked closely with the Black Arts Association of Los Angeles and has been an avid promoter of cultural diversity through the city, and he's left a vivid imprint with his art throughout our city. You see the murals that have been displaying on the board, efforts that he organized during the 1984 Olympic, he headed the Olympic Freeway mural project. On the corner of Figueroa and King, the peace mural, which over the past few weeks has been restored by Mr. Davis and his team, it was created in 1986 as an acknowledgement to the fact that we must be ever vigilant in the world of complex issues and ongoing conflicts. The placement of this mural on King Boulevard serves as a reminder to all that Dr. King was an advocate for peace and the awardee of the Nobel Peace Prize for his revolutionary work. This mural, again, los palomas, birds of peace, flying eastward with the global peace symbol and the white flag, the work as a whole gives the whole passing under the 110 freeway the impression of a tunnel of color. With the support of Zabala and Partners Restoration Company and the citywide murals program, we want to thank you, Alonzo, for your long-lasting work and for your artistic imprint on this great city. Before we hear from Alonzo, I'm going to ask Felicia Beiler, Director of Public Art with the Department of Cultural Affairs, is Felicia with us? Ah, yes, she is. Felicia, would you care to just add a few words?
Good morning. Thank you, I just, on behalf of the Department of Cultural Affairs, I too want to salute Alonzo for his longstanding, purposeful, impactful artistic career. I think that the work that you have contributed, both individually as an artist, but also with your work with Dale Davis, your brother, has contributed to the artistic legacy of the city. The peace mural is timely and relevant and ever more needed right now, so thank you for your restoration efforts so that we can salute this work and enjoy the image for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, we want to thank the Department of Cultural Affairs for its support and contribution to this grand effort, but without further ado, and again, members and family and friends, I invite you to come by and see this extraordinary piece of art under the 110 freeway at King and Figueroa, but without further ado, here is the gentleman who created it and who has created so many lasting impressions for us in this city, Mr. Alonzo Davis.
Before you start speaking, you deserve a huge round of applause by everybody, this phenomenal work, thank you.
I'm going to be brief, I just want to say that my history goes back to Mayor Bradley and his Deputy Mayor Lynda Griege, who have been longstanding friends and associates in my direction, and, boy, the city of Los Angeles is really sparkling, and I'm glad to see the changes, and I couldn't believe the new construction at USC and the fact that the sports arena is now to be a new facility, it greatly enhances the neighborhood for which that mural exists, and it's a privilege to be here and a privilege to continue to be part of the cultural fabric of the city of Los Angeles, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you, Councilman Price, for bringing such a remarkable Angelino here before us, so we appreciate it. All righty, and while you're taking some photos, we have a special announcement of some special guests from Councilmember Joe Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Price, for that incredible presentation. Colleagues, I'd like to welcome to Los Angeles John Faro City Council Chambers, 116th Street School at a Harbor Gateway in my district, we welcome you, we thank you, and talk about girl power at Harbor Gateway, we have before you 116th Street, the leadership of 116th Street Elementary School. Welcome, we have the President of 116th Street School, Kimberly, the Vice President, Dahlia, the Sergeant of Arms, Ariana, and Shayla, the treasure, so Ms. Martinez, we'd be proud of girls in leadership in Harbor Gateway, and this is the future of Los Angeles City Government here, we welcome you, we love you, we continue to support you, and we want the best for you, so again, welcome to your Los Angeles City Hall, and enjoy the tour, enjoy the rest of the day, and good luck to you, we love you. Thank you, Mr. President, or Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Buscaino. Mr. Englander, are you ready for your presentation, sir?
All right, yes, thank you very much, Madam President. Let me just start off by saying, one bourbon, one Scotch, and one beer, and one person, and one person that's been handling that with an incredible department, ABC, Alcohol Beverage Control, so today, we're honoring them for a special award, and particularly honoring LAPD Commander Kevin McCarthy and his work as well that he's been doing with them, but it really goes down to Deputy Director Kathy Barnes and her oversight, but one person, Sergeant Two, Lee Fernando Garcia, and I'll get into what he's been doing in a moment, but our city has over 6,000 ABC licenses to manage within 21 geographic divisions, as we all know, and thanks to this department, with their grant assistance that they've received, they've trained nearly 600 officers on ABC enforcement and prevention strategies, as well as completed over 150 star responsible beverage service training sessions for Los Angeles, that's remarkable, they all deserve a huge round of applause, let's give them a round of applause for that. Particularly in this day and age, when we think about what that means, compliance, the shoulder taps that they do, the sting operations, the vice operations and the partnerships, and what does that mean for all of us and our loved ones, safer streets, it means that people aren't out there drinking and driving or wrecking havoc on our streets because we're training the establishments not to continue to serve or to take the keys away. They've created code systems that are all new and coming out now, that people can ask in a bar, and they have code words to tell the bartender, "I need an Uber, I need a taxi", they've created all of those systems, and the relationships and the partnerships to keep all of us safe. So normally, this is a two-person position, two people that handle all of this with an ABC to go out there and do this, and in 2008, Lee was assigned to the Detective Support and Vice Division, Operation ABC Unit, except for the fact that for the last six months, he's been doing it by himself, and that's why I said he drinks alone, all right, no more jokes about that. I'm getting the shoulder on that one, no, shoulder tap. Sergeant Lee coordinates standardized training for alcohol retailers, deploys decoy shoulder tap operations, and educates businesses about the need for compliance with alcohol beverage laws, and he participates in safe and sober graduation programs sponsored by the state ABC agency. He's got over 27 years within the department and has just done a phenomenal job. To give you a little more of his background, I'd like to now introduce our Deputy Director, Kathy Barnes, to say a few words, thank you so much.
Yes, ABC has had a longstanding relationship with Los Angeles Police Department, the GAP program, we began in 1991, five, 1995, I apologize, but they have been with us every year since, and they've been awarded an award every year. The mission of the Grant Assistance Program is what is now referred to as GAP, is to work with local law enforcement agencies in developing effective, comprehensive, and a strategic approach in eliminating the crime and public nuisance associated with problem alcoholic beverage outlets. Each year, the department awards up to $3 million in special funding to law enforcement agencies throughout the state, these awards vary depending on size of the department and the needs. During the 2015-16 grant cycle, the Los Angeles Police Department was one of 44 agencies selected throughout the state and awarded the maximum amount of $100,000. Like I said, the GAP program has been created to strengthen partnerships between ABC and local law enforcement agencies, and we continue to do that with the Los Angeles Police Department. The program is designed to educate licensees in communities about the need for compliance with alcoholic beverage laws and also help increase public safety. Los Angeles Police Department, as you have heard some of the stats, have done an outstanding job, every year they've been rewarded, this last past fiscal year, they had over 200, or 2,000 arrests, increased visits to ABC licensed premises, and have continuously developed a stronger relationship with the community. So on behalf of my Director, Ramona Paredo, and my fellow ABC employees here, I have Sergeant, or Supervisor Truckbone and Agent Ben Dalarosa, we hereby present Los Angeles Police Department with a significant accomplishment award, and it is my honor to present this to you. Thank you.
I want to thank ABC for the award, but most important, I want to acknowledge the work of our 21 area vice units, because without them, this award would not be possible. We've done a lot of good work over the past year and over the past 20 some odd years in a, for us to continue to get this grant, and again, I want to stress that this award would not be possible without the work of the 21 area vice units, so I want to thank them for all their hard work, and we have a great working relationship with the Department of ABC, and I want to thank them for everything that they do, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. So real quick, I really want to recognize what they're doing, they, it was mentioned, it was mentioned a moment ago about how many arrests are made in the city of Los Angeles every year for drinking and driving. We don't want to make an arrest, at all, we would rather not have somebody out there drinking and driving at all, and that's what ABC has been able to do, is bring those numbers down, having less people out there intoxicated on our streets, making sure that people are responsible, and not only are the patrons responsible, but the operators are responsible and trained, so again, Sergeant Lee, thank you so much for your efforts in making us a safer city, we really appreciate it, thank you very much.
We're going to go in the back now and take some quick photos.
Thank you, Mr. Englander, Mr. Price, are you ready for your second presentation, sir?
Thank you, Madam President, members, this Monday, we're going to honor the legacy of a great man, and that legacy is more important than ever, a man who with his supporters sought to change the faiths of our nation, and who did so. Recent events have only proven that we still have a long way to go. Reverend Martin Luther King was an inspiration to many of us, those of us who value and respect all human life, those of us who respect the rights and the beliefs of others, those of us who believe in justice. It's going to be a long four years, and we need organizations like the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, who we are recognizing today, that have carried on the legacy of Dr. King, and remind us of where we've been, where we don't want to go back to, and where we need to go to ensure the future of our children and our communities. On Monday, the Southern Christian Leadership Conference will be holding their annual Legacy Awards Benefit Gala in memory of Amelia Boynton Robinson, Julian Bond, and the Honorable Lou Stokes. With me today is Pastor William D. Smart Jr., the President and CEO of SCLC, along with Alice Goff, the Chairwoman, and I'd like to ask Dr. Smart to make a few remarks before we introduce the awardees for their leadership. Dr. Smart?
Thank you, Councilman Price, and for all of your support into the council and the President, this is an exciting year because just this week, 60 years ago, Dr. Martin Luther King met with some 60 ministers and formed the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, and so today, just as ever, is just as more important, and with the changes in Washington, we're even more determined to let his dream live by the work we do and the fight that we have, that is before us, we are determined that no one will be discriminated against, we're determined that no one will be... be, no body will be sent home, we're determined that health care will continue to go forward, we're ready to fight in the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King. So thank you so much. We hope that you'll come out and support many of our activities, and particularly our gala this week. I want to thank my chairperson, who got caught up in an emergency meeting, Ms. Alice Goff, and I want to thank again Mr. Curran Price.
Thank you, Reverend Smart. On Monday, as I mentioned, we're going to be honoring several individuals for their outstanding leadership, including Bob Stunover, no stranger here, the President of SEIU Local 721, is being honored with the Drum Major Award of Justice. Bob? Anne Marie Johnson, actress and activist, is going to receive the Rosa Parks Humanitarian Award. Gregory Akili, community activist, is going to receive the President's Award. And last, and certainly not least, Dr. Monroe Campbell is going to receive the 60th Anniversary Special Recognition Award. Members, please join me in honoring all these outstanding individuals. Congratulations on being recognized for all that you do, and know that we recognize the importance of what you do for the greater good of our community. Again, thank you.
다음 말을 듣는 거죠?
네.
You can speak next.
네, 네.
우리 Herb Wesson 기다리고 있었는데요. 미팅이 안 나와서 일부러 좀더 늦은 거예요.
Herb Wesson이 나와요, 이제?
네?
Herb Wesson이 와요?
나오려고 했는데 못 나오니까.
All right, Councilmember Rue, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues and fellow Angelinos. Today is Korean American Day, a day of immense pride for the Korean American community in Los Angeles and across the United States. And I am joined by the many leaders of the Korean American community. And you know, for the past several years, we at City Hall have been celebrating this special day to commemorate the immigration of the first Korean immigrants. And this was supposed to be a joint presentation with our council president, Councilmember Herb Wesson, but he is occupied in the back. But I especially want to thank him for allowing me to take lead on this presentation for the past two years. Because today's celebration reaffirms our city's commitment to the rich diversity and inclusion of all people. This message is especially important right now, given what we've seen in the news lately. And for those of you who are not familiar with Korean American Day, let me, please allow me to provide a brief synopsis, for it is the American story. On January 13, 1903, it marks the beginning of all Korean immigration, with 56 men, 21 women, and 25 children who voyaged across the Pacific Ocean, arriving in Honolulu, Hawaii. This period between 1903 to 1967 marks three significant waves of Korean immigration to the United States. The first wave, from 1903 to 1905, about 7,500 hopeful Koreans traveled on the USS Gallic across the Pacific Ocean to work on the sugarcane plantations in Hawaii, to provide a better life for themselves and their families back at home in Korea. The second wave of Korean immigration arrived in the 1950s, after the conclusion of the Korean War, where nearly 100,000 military brides and approximately 300,000 Korean adoptees entered the United States. And the third wave began in 1967, with hundreds and thousands of Korean immigrants, Koreans immigrating under the 1965 Immigration Act signed by President Lyndon Johnson. I am incredibly proud to say my parents, along with the thousands, were given this unique opportunity to provide a better life for their families and to achieve the American dream, and work towards a prosperous future for the many generations of Korean Americans to come. In 2003, Korean Americans from all around the United States formed the First Centennial Committee of Korean Immigration, joining federal representatives, state officials, and local governments, including us, the city of Los Angeles, to celebrate the 100th anniversary of this historic day. After the celebrations concluded, the Centennial Committee unanimously decided to continue to commemorate this day as Korean American Day. Now, please allow me to introduce some of the Korean American organizations that were vital in making the Korean American Day a reality. First, I'd like to recognize, no longer new, but already a fabric of the local Korean American community, I'd like to recognize the Council General Ki Cho Lee from the Republic of Korea.
Okay. Mr. President, Councilmembers, today, the Korean American Day is the most honorable day for all the Korean Americans, because it is the anniversary of being recognized by entire society of the United States. Today is also an honorable day for me personally, because I stand here at the City Hall in front of respectable President and Councilmembers. Thank you, Councilmember David Ryu, for your kind invitation. As a Korean diplomat for 33 years, I lived in seven countries and traveled more than 80 countries. However, since my first arrival here in Los Angeles 30 years ago, together with my wife, our dream to live in Los Angeles had never changed it. Because we are fascinated by Los Angeles, there is no doubt that LA is the best place to live in in the world. You may take it for granted, however, in the eyes of the foreigner, you are blast people just because you live in Los Angeles. Since the first Korean immigrants came over to the United States 114 years ago, Korean Americans have lived strenuous lives to achieve the American dream. As a result of their tireless efforts, astronwill, to become exemplary people of the United States, the US Congress designated the January 13th the Korean American Day. So the mission of the first generation of the Korean Americans has been accomplished. I believe it is a dream and duty of the second generation of the Korean Americans to make more contribution to the US society, and also to play a key role as catalyst to further strengthen the special relations between South Korea and the United States. And my Council General is determined to support the Korean American community here to fulfill their dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Council General Lee. Next, we have Mr. Byung Man Lee, President of the Korean American Foundation of Los Angeles.
Hi, everyone. As I'm the President of the Korean American Foundation of LA, I would like to express my sincere appreciation to all members of the City Council and City of LA, who have been pleased with today's declaration of the 12th Korean American Day and have helped us for this day. I would like to share the joy with all of you. I would like to say great thanks and great greeting in front of the news media outlet in LA City, especially all the City Council and David Ryu. Thank you, and thank you again.
Thank you, President Lee. And you know, this is the first presentation I did this year, and I see the high-def television, wow. I think you can see every blemish that everyone has. Next, we have, on behalf of the President of the Korean American Federation, Los Angeles, who is currently in Sacramento, also declaring, taking part in the Declaration of Korean American Day in the state, we have Vice Chairman Reverend John Park.
Good morning, Honorable Council President and Councilmembers. I would like to thank you for celebrating and recognizing January 13 as a Korean American Day. Over a century ago, the first Korean immigrant arrived in this country, facing the challenges and barriers of a new language and culture. It is a familiar experience for many immigrants in the United States today. Since 1902, Korean Americans have invested themselves in the American dream that has led so many here to be born. But the Korean American experience has not been easy. The 1992 era, for example, was a difficult and painful time for our community. Yet in line with the unresenting American spirit, our community came together to learn from this hardship, by becoming more politically and civically engaged, by becoming active citizen in our community. Korean Americans have also made a notable contribution in the field of medicine, sport, the art, media, technology, government, and so much more. Today, we think of the contribution made by Korean Americans like Charles H. Kim, a Korean independence activist and Korean American community leader. Young Ok Kim, the first Asian American colonial to lead a US battalion in war. Dr. Sammy Lee, a two-time Olympic gold-winning champion. An Chang Ho, a Korean independence activist, only leader of the Korean American immigrant community. And our brother H. Song, the first Asian American elected to the California State Legislature. And David Ryu, who became the first Korean American Councilmember in the city of Los Angeles. Korean American Day is about recognizing the history and achievement of Korean Americans, but it is about welcoming the diversity that Korean Americans bring. It is about celebrating Korean Americans as true Americans. On behalf of KAPLA, President Laura Jean, and the Los Angeles Korean American Community, I would like to thank our City Councilmember for acknowledging and celebrating the advances, achievements, and the history of the Korean American community. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Park. Last but not least, we are lucky to have Mr. Ralph on to give us some final words of wisdom and some reflection. Not only have we lost a tremendous leader this couple of months ago, Dr. Sammy Lee, one of the pioneers in the community. Mr. Ralph Fons is the remaining surviving son of the legendary Dozan An Chang Ho, who was the moral compass of the first Korean American community, as well as the famed freedom fighter. So without regards, Mr. Ralph Fons?
Thank you. City Councilmembers, this day is especially meaningful for us here in Los Angeles, because I was born in Los Angeles 90 years ago, and except for a tour of duty in the US Navy during World War II, I've lived my whole 90 years here in Los Angeles. So it's very meaningful for me that you are commemorating the arrival of the Korean American pioneers that came to the territory of Hawaii in 1903. But be it known that many of those that went to Hawaii came over here and ended up in Los Angeles, making Los Angeles the demographic center of the Korean community here in the USA. So it pleases me that I am able to say to you, we are happy that this Korean American Day equates with the Martin Luther King Birthday Celebration, since we in the Korean community are appreciative and indebted to Martin Luther King. So with this happening, be it known, Los Angeles was the cornerstone of the Korean American community in the United States, and it was the cornerstone of the structure of the Korean American community that looms today. So Councilmembers, thank you kindly.
Thank you, Ralph. Very much, and Ralph was also a teacher at Dorsey...
Alamaney High School.
Alamaney High School. Well, you attended Dorsey.
I attended manual arts.
Manual arts, I apologize. Graduate of manual arts, our local manual arts. Thank you very much, Councilmembers, for allowing us to make this presentation and for the celebration of Korean American Day.
We have some speakers on the queue, and before I turn it over to them, I just wanted to thank you, Councilmember Rue. You know, we are the most populated city outside of Korea with the most Koreans, and we're proud of that. And I have one of the highest populated districts in the city of Los Angeles, in Port Ranch, representing such a large number, and being so proud of that, and the relationships and the partnerships that we have, and what an honor it is to celebrate and have this day today. And I'd like to turn it over to Councilmember Joe Buscaino to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Rue, for bringing our family, our brothers and sisters from the Korean American community. We recognize the contributions you've made, the sacrifices you've made, your love for this country, for this great city, and it is a city that embraces everyone. And it's a city that tells its story, that even David Ryu, the first Korean American, can serve on this City Council. So let's give David Ryu a round of applause for his dedication to this city and to the people he serves. And as you well know, the Republic of Korea gifted to the American people the Korean Friendship Bell in my district in San Pedro overlooking the Pacific Ocean. It is a site that has welcomed millions of visitors, that has embraced our relationship with the Republic of Korea, and we thank those who made this possible. And we, as you well know, we ring the bell five times a year, and today is one of those five times that we ring the bell and recognize our relationship with the people in the Republic of Korea. So with that, we say "Kamsanidae," and thank you for an incredible gift that was given to this country, to this city, our Korean Friendship Bell. Thank you.
And to close, I'd like to make a couple of remarks in Korean. 우리 한인 커뮤니티한테 우리 Korean American Day입니다. 오늘은 진짜 우리 행복한 날이고 우리 커뮤니티가 이때까지 더 발전하고 우리 어르신들이 고생하시고 Not just this generation, but many generations before us, 고생하셔서 우리 next generation 저 차세대 위에서 저 위에서 여기까지 왔습니다. 그래서 우리 커뮤니티 너무 감사하고요. 이 날은 우리 커뮤니티 날입니다. 우리 이민 사회, 한인 커뮤니티 위에서 celebration 날이고 우리 City Hall 시청안에서 한국말로 쓸수 있다는 거. 왜냐면은 이 시청이 우리 시청이니까요. This is our City Hall, belongs to all peoples in the city of Los Angeles, and it is such a privilege to take part and be part of the fabric of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Steve, can you make sure that video falls? No, 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 you're fine, you're fine. The video goes around that way, because there's a couple guys who I couldn't stop from that side. Do we have any more? The media goes around that way, because there's a couple guys who I couldn't stop from that side. Do we have any more? The media goes around that way, because there's a couple guys who I couldn't stop from that side. Do we have any more? The media goes around that way, because there's a couple guys who I couldn't stop from that side. Do we have any more? The media goes around that way, because there's a couple guys who I couldn't stop from that side. Do we have any more? The media goes around that way, because there's a couple guys who I couldn't stop from that side.
All right, we're going to go ahead and turn our attention back to the agenda if we can. Madam Clerk, where does that take us?
Mr. President, there is a request to have Item 1B, and I continue to January 27.
Okay, that'll be the order without objection.
And there are also cards on Item Number 1.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take Cards on 1. Adala Torres, please, on Item 1.
Si, buenos dias. Buenos dias. Buenos dias. Do we have translation? Buenos dias. Este, yo no sabía de este papel. Si sabía del caso, pero yo pensé que era un pago ahorita. I did not know about this paper. Actually, I did know, but I did not know that I had to make a payment right now. Y es que no haya querido hacerle caso este papel, sino que no tenía yo dinero para pagar. It's not that I'm ignoring this paper, it's just I did not have any money to pay. Y pues ahorita es lo que ya junte para pagarlo. Now, I do have the money to make a payment. Y pues. Señora, nos puede dar su domicilio, por favor? Es 1412 Valencia Street, Los Angeles, California, 90,015. 1412 South Valencia Street, Los Angeles, California. Okay, I'm going to have the staff speak to her on the side of the robe so we can get these things squared away. Señora, le vamos a decir que, por favor, pase a hablar con el personal del departamento. That puts us on January 27th. If we can relay that to the constituent as well. Did you make a note of that? Continue the Item for two weeks.
Madam President, there's also a request, not only to continue 1D, but as well as 1F to January 27.
That will be the order without objection. Okay, Mr. Walsh, on Item 1, sir. Are you here?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Here we have Number 1. This is building and safety, nuisance abatement costs, and/or noncompliance of code violations. These are liens. This is what happens when your landlord disobeys the city and doesn't repair your home, where you live. And, as I said, when the city does a good job, I don't want those white guys to say you're all a bunch of crooks. No, no. If you do a good job, I say you do a good job, and on building and safety, and I've lived here since 1976, and before that, since 1970, you do an excellent job.
Mr. Walsh, come on back up for your one minute on general public comment, please.
I signed up for more than one item. I get three minutes on the general comment.
One item for general public comment, John. Your clock is ticking.
You're taking my time away from me. John Walsh, yes, on Measure S. We must have Measure S. They're going to, and I just want all the Jews to know, if this Measure S fails, they're going to come into your Jewish neighborhoods and tear it down. The Asians, the Koreans, the rest are going to tear your neighborhoods down. I'm never wrong. And Rabbi Hyer, for Hyer, he sold you out. He has a list of all the mega projects that will come in west of La Brea and tear and destroy your neighborhood. That's what's going to happen if you vote against Measure S. Two-year break. I signed, go check my cards.
And just for clarification, Mr. Walsh has cards in the special meeting as well, which will be dealt with separately.
Thank you for the clarification, yes, that is correct. So, let's go ahead and seeing no other cards on that item, let's go ahead and open the Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please. All right, so at this point, let's go ahead and recess the regular meeting and open the special meeting, if we could, please.
Blumenfield, Bonan Buscaino, Sidio, Englander, Harris Dawson, Weezer, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members in a court, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, let's go ahead and take those items now. Which item is before us?
Items 6 through 8 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, let's go ahead and consider those items to consider those. So, we'll go ahead and open the roll for consideration. Close the roll.
Mr., no, that's just for consideration.
That's just for consideration, that's correct. We weren't voting on the items, as I said, for consideration. So, go ahead and open the roll for consideration. Close the roll. We'll open the roll. Okay, it's closed. And tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
Okay, so those items are now before us, and we have cards on each one of those?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on 6, 7, 8, as well as a substitute motion and Number 7.
Very well, let's go ahead and take those cards now. 6, 7, and 8.
Okay, special meeting. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. The first one is to repay the Section 8 loan for Maltin Square Project lending developers. Lending here, they're lending there. We're talking about, you can't even pay the $13 million that you laid out last, on Wednesday, for two accidents, and meanwhile, you're getting repaid. The city is in chaos, no Olympics. Number 7, this is valet parking operators that provide valet services for events at private residences. Now, we're subsidizing valet parking, and you can believe that the valet parking are all Mexican Hispanics, and the people who run it, well, they're the same group that I belong to, the Jewish group. Number 8, this is overtime account to continue providing critical services from the Bureau of Sanitation. The Bureau of Sanitation is total chaos. Everything is falling apart, the pipes are falling apart, and what are we going to do? Provide critical services for the Bureau of Sanitation. And what is overtime? Well, it's no big deal. Nobody's going to ask, well, how much is it? Well, it says right here, $2 million, and there's not one damn one of you up here who's going to ask the question, where's the $2 million going to go to? And that's why I'm telling everybody in Switzerland, where my great-great-grandfather came from, don't, Paris, 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 no LA. We can't even pay our debts, and we're going to have billions of dollars rolled up. HollywoodHighlands.org, you know what you can do with the extra 50 seconds.
Thank you, John.
Mr. President, Council can vote on Item 6?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do that, and so you can please open the roll on Item 6. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
Great, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Also, for Item 8, it can be voted on, and there is a request to have that urgent forthwith also.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on Item 8. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
That is approved, and approved for urgent forthwith as well.
Mr. President, that requires another vote.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on urgent forthwith. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
Mr. Sidio.
Yes, I've been trying to get your attention. I wanted to get urgent forthwith on Item 6 as well.
That requires another vote, sir.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that. And can you, can we check his button as well? I'm not sure why it didn't come up on the screen. Let's just, testing, 1, 2, 3. It's not coming up. So, if we can have IT check on his speaking button as well, please. We'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
That's approved. All right, thank you very much.
And for Item, finally, for Item Number 7, there's a substitute motion which has been submitted and circulated. There requires a vote to substitute.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll for substitution.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, it requires a motion to substitute, so there needs to be a mover as well as a seconder.
Okay, so on Item 7, we'll need a mover, and Council Member Blumenfield moves, and a seconder. Council Member Sidio seconds. Okay, so with that, that is now before us.
We've already taken comment on the item, and the substitute motion has been posted and circulated before comments were taken.
Great, okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on that.
So, Mr. President, for clarification, this is a vote to substitute?
Correct. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
Okay, now that motion is actually before us, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on that. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Does that conclude the special?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and adjourn the special meeting and reconvene the regular meeting. What's before us now, Madam Clerk?
There's a special motion.
All right, so we'll go ahead and take up that special motion now.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, on Wednesday evening, a 9,000-pound concrete slab in half a home tumbled into Laurel Canyon Boulevard as a result of a mudslide caused by recent rains. The home has been red-tagged and another home yellow-tagged. Laurel Canyon has been closed since Wednesday evening from sunset to mole-hole-in to allow emergency crews to assess the situation and work to reopen this critical north-south artery across our hillsides. This motion authorizes city staff to commence work as needed over the holiday weekend and ensure that we are providing for the public safety. At this point, I'd like to defer to the city attorney to reaffirm the findings for this action.
Thank you. So, two votes are required on the findings. First, the need came to the attention of the city after the posting of the agenda, and second, there is an immediate need in order to restore traffic flow in this critical area. So, first, the council would vote on the findings under Government Code Section 54954.2. Then, we'll take public comment, and then, we will vote on the substance of the motion.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do that and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
Now, since the motion is in front of us, we will take public comment on it, if there is any.
Do we have any comment cards? We do not. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 and eyes.
That is approved. Forthwith, without objection, that'll be the order. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Council has items post for posting and referral, sir?
Okay, we'll go ahead and post and refer those.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President, there are a few more general public comments left.
I've seen those as well. So, we'll go ahead and call those up now. One minute each, you could start coming on up. Mickey Jackson, followed by Susan Hunter, Annie Gaggen, Miguel Seguro, Jay Bieber. Come on up.
Mickey Jackson with the Coalition to Preserve LA, yes on S. Well, there was a deadline today for you to pass that your promised ban on developer money, and ding, you missed the deadline, so now it's an emergency. Get this drafted today. Mr. Wesson, hear it in committee as soon as possible. Keep your promise. Ban developer contributions to City Hall. Include the mayor's promised ban since September on ex parte communications with all elective and appointed city positions. You can voluntarily do these things today. Pledge to stop it now. Ban developers' money to all initiatives and measures in this city. Ban foreign money to all initiatives and measures in this city. We call on you to do this now, today. Vote yes on Measure S, March 7. Vote. Stop the developer buyout of City Hall now.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Susan Hunter, and I'm here on yes on S. And what Mickey had just said, in September, Eric Garcetti had promised to ban ex parte meetings with developers. That promise was never fulfilled, so I'm here today to ask of you City Council Members that are present, which one of you right now will vow to never take another ex parte meeting with a developer again, starting today? Any of you? None of you? This is why we have to pass S in March, because City Council refuses to clean itself up, so it's on the people to do it for you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Council. My name is Jay Bieber. I am here with the Yes on S campaign. We want to thank the members of the Council who have put forth the motion. We want to thank the members of the council who have put forth the motion or the idea to ban developer contributions. We asked you to do that immediately. We had asked that it be done today, and that hasn't been done yet, but we ask that you do that as quickly as possible. Also, there is one council member, unfortunately, he's not here in the chamber right now, who has vowed just personally not to take any developer contributions. And if that's good for one of you, I think it's good for all of you. You can do this today. You don't have to give back money that was given in the past, but all you have to do is stand up today and say you're going to do the same thing, and you're not going to take any developer money as well. While we think that the law needs to be changed, we also think that, right now, you can do the exact same thing without passing anything, just personally take on that responsibility. Thank you very much.
All right. Next speakers. Jaclyn Richardson. Michelle Walker. And Juan? Annie, Annie Gagen, did you speak yet? Apologize. Did you speak? Are you still here? No? Okay, you can take her name off. And Miguel Seguro. Miguel? Still here? No? Okay, so we can take off Miguel's name as well. Okay. Floor is yours. Thank you.
Some people steal budgets, and they need to be confronted. They steal retirement teacher fund budgets, hot housing budgets, homeless budgets, homeless housing budgets. They steal federal military budgets and federal warfare budgets. They also steal federal jobs, state jobs, and local jobs. It's okay to give people budgets in some situations, but these people are stealing budgets, and they need to be confronted. It's been going on for a while, and they really do need to be confronted.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for all the work that you all do, especially for the work that you've done on helping to eliminate homelessness. We still have a lot more work to do, but thank you for what you've done. Also, special thanks to my councilman, Wesson, Koreatown area, Wesson, and then Price for the honor of SCLC, and then Sadio, I love the garbage cans, it helps us to clean up our area and neighborhood. One thing I want to mention, too, is I'm activist, but also do comedy, but one thing that I do talk a lot about is I learned a lot about what our LA city government can do when there are issues that deal with immigrants and Latinos and Hispanics. So thank you for all that, because we want things done for everyone, but please remember the African-American community and the many marches we've had and the challenges that we had, that we, like Martin Luther King said, when there's injustice to one, there's injustice to all, so let's all work together. And my Asian community, because I'm in Koreatown, and we obviously need to make sure we're making sure we're including them as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Juan, a call?
I've been saying that you guys want to stand up against Donald Trump about the immigrant issues, and that's pretty cool. I never thought I would be appreciating City Hall at all, ever, but on this one, you need to build a wall around Donald Trump and send him back to wherever the hell he belongs. He don't belong in this world. Send him back to the moon or Mars or give him a few cookies along the way. He's pretty mean, unless he's eating his Kentucky Fried Chicken. Go to hell, you motherfucking Donald Trump! Go to hell, you motherfucking Donald Trump! Go to hell, you motherfucking Donald Trump! I don't want that guy anywhere near this world. Send him back to hell. He came from hell. He needs to go back to hell.
How do you really feel, Juan? All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for sharing. With that, colleagues, that concludes general public comment. So thank you very much. And where does that take us, Madam Clerk?
Mr. President, the dust is clear.
Fantastic, all right. Any announcements, colleagues? Do we have any announcements? Seeing no announcements, we'll go ahead and ask, do we have any adjourning motions? Do you have an announcement? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, January is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and this year, we are kicking off our Human Trafficking Prevention Month with our annual Human Trafficking Awareness Month toiletry drive. If you recall, last year, we had a similar drive where we collected a lot of toiletries like shampoos, deodorants, and such things for girls who are rescued off our streets in our city and brought into these shelters. Some of them just are basically rescued with only their clothes on their backs and don't have the actual necessary essentials. So if you can help us this year by not only donating shampoo, deodorant, and so on, by collecting these things in your offices, there'll be a number of bins throughout City Hall located on the first floor, the third floor, and the fourth floor here at City Hall, both in my district, offices in the valley, we would really appreciate it. This year, the products are going to be distributed to two nonprofit organizations that service girls throughout the city of Los Angeles. One of them is Journey Out and Saving Innocence. They provide 24-hour hotlines to victims, drop-in centers, court advocacy, and counseling and educations to victims of human trafficking. Last year, we collected over 40 bins of toiletries for these young girls, and so it was very successful. And gentlemen, I'm challenging you to commit to helping collect even more toiletries this year because these girls desperately need it. If you cannot, are not able to collect shampoo, deodorant, toothbrushes, and so on, I'm happy to take your money and go buy it for you. And so we will be collecting checks if any of you want to make a contribution. These girls are our sisters, our nieces, our daughters, and they can really use our help. Like I said, a lot of these kids are rescued off the streets in the middle of the night with only their clothes on their back and shampoo, deodorant, toothbrushes. Feminine products are very, very needed in some of these shelters to get these kids back to a normal life. So last year, we were very successful. We're going to have another challenge, and hopefully, we can up our game. And like I said, if you don't have any of this stuff lying around, I'm happy to take your money. We'll go buy it on your behalf, and I will make that public announcement. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
No, thank you very much. It's a great announcement. Appreciate that program, all the support and help. With that, colleagues, any other announcements? Okay, seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? We do. Okay, so if we can have everybody in council chambers, please rise. Everybody, please rise for adjourning motions. Thank you. Councilmember Rue.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, today, I'd like to sadly adjourn our meeting in the memory of Francine Ferrer, who passed away on December 21st, 2016. Francine was born in New York State and moved to Los Angeles in 1956. Shortly after, Francine met Jules, and they were married in 1957. The couple moved to San Fernando Valley and raised their three children in North Hollywood. In 1985, they moved to Sherman Oaks, where she and Jules became very active in the local community. Francine was passionate about making Sherman Oaks community a better and more beautiful place to live, work, and visit. Francine attended all the monthly meetings of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association meetings with her husband Jules, who served as the organization's vice president, and participated in the many charitable and beautification projects. She was an extraordinary woman who loved to sing, and she enjoyed music, entertaining, fashion, and life in the big city. Francine is survived by her husband Jules of 59 years, and I'm sure you all know Jules. He is the honorary mayor of Sherman Oaks, who is very much beloved, and their three wonderful children, Stephen, Denise, Debbie, and their spouses, and their grandson Jake. Francine's enthusiasm, gentle soul, and love of life will be truly missed by all who knew and adored her. May she rest in peace. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Councilmember Blumenfield.
Thank you. Today, colleagues, I ask us to adjourn in memory of Noah Michaelis. She's a 14-year-old girl who battled congenital heart disease. You actually, you all met her. She came here about a year and a half ago. She gave, when we were meeting in Van Nuys, I don't know if you remember, she gave a very moving speech that highlighted the effects of congenital heart disease and the importance of giving. Her journey to help others like her began at the tender age of five, at that time of her last open-heart surgery, when she received a thoughtful care package from the Hopeful Hearts Foundation. She immediately took comfort in this gift and wanted to see other children like herself feel as special as she did. As a living example of paying it forward, she started a lemonade stand to raise money for other kids who had the same disease. That's why we honored her in council that time a year and a half ago. She was born with heterodoxie syndrome, which is a very complex heart disease, with a number of other conditions related to that. She suffered serious ailments, but you never would have known that by the way she sang, she laughed, her vivaciousness, the way she talked with all of us in this chamber. She was born on November 7th, 2003. We lost her all too soon, January 3rd of this year. She's survived by her father Keith, her mother Cecile, and her soon-to-be baby brother. Her memorial will be held January 29th this year at 1:30 PM at Paramount Ranch at 2903 Cornell Road, Agoura Hills. Everyone is invited to that. May she rest in peace.
Very sad. Thank you for that. Mr. Buscagino.
Thank you. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Ronald Cooper, who is the father of a good friend of mine, David Cooper. Ronald Cooper was born on May 17, 1939, in Pasadena. He has a younger brother, Ken, who currently lives in Northern California. Ron attended Dorsey High School and went on to attend USC for one year to become an architect. It was during that year he found his passion for teaching. He transferred to Cal State LA to obtain his credentials. He served in the Army National Guard for seven years, six of those were active. Then he began to teach at Redondo Union High School, specializing in art, ceramics, drawing, where he spent the next 40 years of his career there. His love for his career was evident. His students loved him, and the school appreciated his work ethic. In 2000, Ron was awarded Redondo Beach Man of the Year for his continuous contributions to the city. He met his bride-to-be, Eleanor, one week before Valentine's Day in 1965 at Coconut Grove in the Ambassador Hotel in Los Angeles. He and Eleanor shared an unending love and were married for 51 years. They also shared a love of travel together, and they visited many countries and shared so many wonderful memories, had three amazing sons, Carl, Craig, and David. Ron did everything he could, including working summers and evenings, to make sure that his sons were taken care of. His legacy lives on in them, as well as his six grandchildren, Cameron, Brandon, Kalani, Emma, Kai, and Andrew, whom he adored. His favorite thing to do was spend time with his family on vacations to Lake Tahoe, San Diego, Mammoth, and Cambria. You would always catch him reading a story or playing a silly game with one of his grandchildren. Ron passed away peacefully on December 29th, 2016, surrounded by those whom he loved and who loved him the most. Our hearts go out to the entire Cooper family. May Ron Cooper rest in peace. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry to hear that. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Seeing none, that concludes this meeting, and we are officially adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a nice weekend and be safe.